Welcome to the special meeting of the Bakersfield City Council. Now speaking, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 4:00 PM special city council meeting of February 8th, 2023. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
And Councilmember Cor.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. So glad to see all of you here tonight. In keeping with council's resolution, the public statements portion is now divided into two periods. There's a period for items listed on the meeting agenda and items not on the meeting agenda. Statements for items listed on this afternoon's agenda are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total per agenda item. Statements regarding items not on the agenda are also given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statements, please give them to the clerk. She'll give copies to the council. If you're here to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card, give your completed card to the city clerk. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on this afternoon's agenda or on a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed to be speakers for the non-agenda portion of the meeting. Those speakers will be called during the non-agenda portion of the meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed on this afternoon's agenda?
Mayor Go, we've received three public speaker cards for items listed on tonight's agenda. The first public speaker is Miguel Pulido.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Pulido and Mayor Pulido.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Go, and thank you to all the city council and the great staff here in Bakersfield. I'm speaking here today on behalf of Green Law Partners. We believe that Bakersfield is the most business-friendly city that we've encountered in California. I don't have to tell you, but you have an amazing mayor. I've served as mayor in Santa Ana for 26 years, and I got to work with mayors across America. And I'll tell you, I don't know what Karen does or takes or eats, but you have an energy, you have commitment, you have the ability to get things done. And I'm here to tell you that the right thing to do, I think, in terms of this habitat conservation plan is to approve one, even though the fees go from $2,000 to $14,000. It sounds counterintuitive. We, as Green Law Partners, would much rather have certainty, pay a fee, sign leases, buy land, get permits, and do projects. And we're very bullish on Bakersfield, you know, onward and forward. I'd love to talk to any of you that have any questions, but I know that it's two minutes. I don't know how much is left, Karen.
You have 42 seconds left.
Forty-two seconds. When I used to, you know, do debates and things, they would give you like, you know, 30-second time limit, and then 15, and then they'd cut you off. And you're, oh, there you go. And your opponents would always go over. And it was never fair, even if the League of Women Voters were, you know, doing the debate or whatever. But this is much better because they didn't have a time clock. You do. So go, Bakersfield. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pulido. Next speaker, please. Welcome, Mr. Thayer.
Good afternoon. Scott Thayer, Senior Vice President, Castle &amp; Cook. Staff did a really good job on summarizing what we've got going here. And what I wanted to at least address is, first of all, if U.S. Fish and Wildlife and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife increase the current fee based on the Consumer Price Index, which that fee would have gone from $2,145 to $4,300, I suspect most property owners, developers, and builders would think that's reasonable. But increasing the fee to $15,681, which will be the fee if the county doesn't participate in the program, that would seem, at least to me, excessive. The increased fee is being used to add kit fox biologist to city staff, add public education specialist to city staff, fund a California Fish and Wildlife employee to be exclusively assigned to the city of Bakersfield, and fund a new disease treatment and monitoring program. This is another tax on the development community to expand government that's not needed. The expired HCPs seem to operate just fine without the added personnel and expense. Castle &amp; Cook is not supportive of the new HCP as currently presented. I suggest that the city contact the two resource agencies to have them come back with a program whose fee is commensurate with an increase in the Consumer Price Index from the recently expired fee. And if that can't be accomplished, then operate without an HCP. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thayer. Next speaker, please. Welcome, Mr. Davis.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilman. Bruce Davis, Executive Vice President, Bolthouse Properties. I'm here to speak about the same fee and maybe to add a little bit to what Scott said. I agree with virtually everything Scott said, and actually, I agree with the first speaker. Having predictability is a wonderful thing. We've had it for 30 years. It's been fabulous. But at the cost of seven, six to seven times more unjustified cost, at the same time when we, as a building community, we as city staff, city is required and pressing forward to have affordable housing, to have, to maintain Bakersfield's position of affordability, to add these costs, which are multiple thousands of dollars to every home that will be there. These costs will have to be passed down to somebody. It doesn't just magically go away. I agree that, you know, having a plan that is something you can count on is wonderful, but there's a premium we're paying for that, and we really don't know what it is. And the majority of the other counties within California don't do that or other parts of the city. They're stuck with the other one. There are problems and challenges to it, which is why we are where we are. However, given the blatant disregard for cost, disregard for the other requirements of the city and the state for us to develop affordable housing, I urge you to reject this or send it back. It's something that's much more palatable and justifiable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Next speaker, please.
Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. Dave Demahowski, Executive Officer for the Home Builders Association of Kern County. I think the existing HCP was probably one of the most user-friendly, cost-effective, and implementable programs in the state of California. However, the final product of the staff's long effort to work with the agencies has resulted in a product that simply creates more problems for our industry than it solves. Previous speakers have already commented on the scope of the price increase, but I think it's also important to kind of take a look at the feasibility of acquiring the type of land that the agencies are looking for. The oil industry owns all the good stuff. However, they're going to need their mitigation land for a whole bunch of new business lines relating to renewable energy and CO2 sequestration. So there's a question as to whether suitable land will be available. We understand the county's not going along with the project or the proposal. I think it needs to be confirmed whether the agencies would certify your HCP without county involvement. And then I think a lot of the things contained in the proposal are essentially unfunded state mandates. They're neither fair nor equitable for city or county. So I think I'll end there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Demahowski. Madam Clerk, any others on the agenda?
Tom D.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, Members of the Council, Tom D., 9100 Ming, representing RJF Properties. We do quite a bit of development in the city, and I go along with the other speakers. We definitely are, you know, appreciative of the efforts and the HPC that has been out there for 30 years. It's been a great tool in our tool chest to get projects through. But unfortunately, when you take $15,000 per acre, it residuals down, and it ends up affecting the landowners. Okay? That's the problem that we have. So we're hoping that there's a way that they could parlay off the existing fee and come up with something that's more reasonable, or, you know, we'll have to take our chances. But we definitely appreciate the work that the city's done and appreciate the fact that we could speak on this. So I'm not in favor of the increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. D. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on this afternoon's agenda?
Mayor Go, we have not received any speaker cards for items not listed on tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Councilmember Weir.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple of questions on here. I'm wondering how staff has gone from what is equivalent to 4,300 and making that $14,000. It seems very unreasonable to me, and it seems hard to justify.
Colleagues, just so you're aware, we're going to have a staff presentation, but go ahead and respond.
Okay, we can have the presentation.
Would that be helpful, and then they can address that? So, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Reports Item 3A, Report on the Status of Efforts Towards Adoption of a New Habitat Conservation Plan: Implications of Expiration of the Metropolitan Bakersfield Habitat Conservation Plan and Request for City Council Direction.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We do have a presentation from Chris Boyle, our Development Services Director. I just wanted to reflect really quickly before that presentation begins that this actually has been quite a lengthy process. I think in fairness to Mr. Boyle to recognize that we've been in conversation for a couple of years now. We have tried very hard to come up with plan elements that we thought would be both fair and representative of the desires and values of our community. That process, of course, has had some successes and some challenges, as there is a compliance agency at the state level that can dictate some of these requirements and stipulations. And so we've brought this forward to council a couple of different times to provide updates along the way. And as of December 31st of 2022, our former plan is expired, so today we're not under coverage of a habitat conservation plan. I wanted to just bring this topic back to council to reframe the challenges that we've been trying to work through and receive some direction. I think what this really is about is weighing some challenging and difficult policy considerations. As many of the public commenters noted, that there is a desire for that predictability or certainty. There's also the cost implications, and so Mr. Boyle will tee up some of those key considerations because mitigation is required by law to occur. It will continue to occur. The question is, how will it occur? And so some of those key considerations are not just cost, but time, that predictability that we talked about. And really, it's about managing risk, I think, for our development community, whereas, you know, for, I think, the broader public, it's also about, you know, ensuring that there is a reasonable mitigation that takes place. And so we'll try and clarify some of those trade-offs here. But essentially, I also want to be clear that, you know, this is a plan that does require a confirmation or acceptance by the State Department of Wildlife. And so we've been in those conversations because it is subject to the expectations or requirements that they set. And as much as we can try and negotiate and manage to get to a place that is, again, more feasible for us and our operations in our community, and I think Mr. Boyle has at length tried very hard to get the best that we can. And I don't, I think we'll see through this presentation, you know, are there opportunities for some questions and some other considerations potentially? But we have worked hard to get what is the best option from the state perspective. And I don't think we're going to see something approved by the state that's particularly different than what's in front of us. But again, we'll walk through our presentation and try and talk through some council considerations and see if there are further avenues to explore. But staff has at length done our best to come up with what we would consider a best-case scenario.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. Mr. Boyle.
Thank you, City Manager Clegg and Madam Mayor, council members. It's a pleasure to be with you this afternoon. The challenge for me really is that I'm trying to coalesce eight years of efforts into a 20-minute presentation with an expectation that it only go 15. So without further ado, I'd like to talk about the Bakersfield Habitat Conservation Plan planning efforts and ask you for direction as it relates to that. I noted it has been eight years, and I've been engaged in this in the last three years, and I'm very pleased to be at a place now where I am asking for direction. Okay, we're working now. Just as a background, a quick history. The MBHCP, or the Metropolitan Bakersfield Habitat Conservation Plan, was adopted in 1994, and it provided a comprehensive conservation plan to mitigate development impacts on protected species. And it's done that very well for a long time. They included a streamlined grading hold process, and I think our development community has noted that it worked really well. Prior to ground disturbance, you submitted a application for a grading permit. It went through a grading hold process, included a biologic study. Then, based on that biologic study, staff issued a grading permit, and ground disturbance occurred. The plan was administered by an implementation trust group that included a member of city staff, a member of county staff, and was assisted by various wildlife agencies and instituted public individuals. It was a original 20-year plan, multiple extensions, as I noted. It's been eight years in working through to a place where we had a plan for you to digest and to measure. And the last extension was provided in September of 2021, which is about the last time I came and visited you. The MBHCP is now expired. All the fees had to have been paid on January 1st as part of a grading permit application. Grading holds were released, and ground disturbance permitted per those grading permits must be completed by June 1. And it's at that time that literally all ground disturbance associated with MBHCP approvals will cease. Just as a reminder, this was the plan area, covered four and five square miles an area, and it's unchanged per the proposed plan. And over those 28 years, the city has purchased over 24,000 acres of endangered species habitat. And so the plan in the MBHCP form has been very successful in realizing a desired outcome. It became very clear when I got here three years ago that a different approach was necessary to bring an approvable plan to you. There had already been four submittals. Each of those submittals had been returned with a mini-novelette of corrections, and it was very clear that the plans that were being submitted to CDFW and to U.S. Fish and Wildlife were insufficient for them to consider them to be approvable. I sat down with those wildlife agencies at that time and said, we need to do things differently. We need to understand what is necessary for a new habitat conservation plan, and we worked with purpose over these last three years in getting to where we are today. With a plan that is generally approvable, there are some small, minor nuances that need to be ironed out. I could talk ad nauseam about them, but I'm on a clock. So right now, the Bakersfield Habitat Conservation Plan is essentially completed. There's only very minor edits. That's a U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service document. It's supported by a NEPA documentation, and that NEPA documentation has already been prepared. We could go to the Federal Register and announce that the city is preparing to adopt a habitat conservation plan in a matter of a couple of weeks. CDFW, or the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, is also nearing completion of the supporting incidental take permit, which is a partner document to the Habitat Conservation Plan. SEQA documentation has been prepared for that as well. And there's maybe a few more nuts and bolts that would have to be worked out with CDFW. But in talking with their representative in the last couple of days, it's something we could get across the finish line in the next six weeks or so. At least, that's the target we would go at. Noting that grant funding for this effort ends at the end of March, and we have been billing our work to a grant, a federal grant, in support of preparing a replacement habitat conservation plan. And with that, that's why I've asked for city direction at this time. I won't belabor all of the things. I talked extensively about what's within the plan. Some of our public speakers noted the additional individuals who would be required, a full-time equivalent for CDFW to work directly with the city of Bakersfield, specifically in quick turnaround times for those grading hold permits. There would be a public information officer who would maintain a website and do public outreach to educate the public on the kit fox and the other two endangered species, the Bakersfield cacti and the San Joaquin Valley antelope squirrel. And there would also be an on-staff biologist, act as a resource to both staff and the development community in discerning the relative risk for incidental take. Incidental take is that process where, if species are present, an incidental take permit is required. In other words, if you might take an endangered species, then you would need an incidental take permit. So the plan is largely, has some expansion in terms of the types of programs that are introduced into the program, and those individuals will talk about what the cost looks like for each of those individual things. It's a 30-year term. Costs are discerned over the entire lifespan. And here's what they look like. Land acquisition costs, habitat management, urban kit fox program, habitat monitoring, plant administration, contingencies, and endowment is built for this plan as well. Those total about $122 million, and quite frankly, this is in algebra in deciding what the cost per acre equates to. There are not a lot of variables. It's the amount of impact acreage, in this case, 8,700 acres. And as a single permittee, if the county weren't a part, that changes slightly, but it doesn't change the cost sufficiently enough to alter the cost per acre fee. It actually goes up a little bit. But it's the cost of the plan divided by the number of impact acres equals your cost per acre fee. And so when you look for, and I explored for a year, various ways to make that cost more palatable to my developer, I have not found those ways. You can do it in any one of a number of ways, but in the end, the cost is still the cost, and the acres are still the acres, and how that fee is assessed remains largely the same. So let's put the cost into context. Someone noted, if you look at straight inflation, it's $4,300 instead of $2,145. And that's true. The inflation rate almost doubles the cost, a little bit more than doubles the cost of the program. But I don't see a Ford F-150 only doubling in cost in the last 28 years. The reality is, if I wanted to buy a loaded F-150 in 1994, it would cost me a little over $21,000, and I really like those chrome 15-inch wheels. Excellent. Another $267 option. Today, that same fully-loaded pickup truck is going to run you about $110,000. The costs of things don't necessarily naturally rise in unison per our cost indexes. So I want to put that into context. I really like that pickup as well. Life without an HCP, which is also known as my phone won't stop ringing, and it won't. And I need to just tell anybody who's watching, SEQA does not provide Endangered Species Act compliance. There isn't a SEQA document I can prepare that is going to provide protections to my development community. Therefore, it is 100% the developer's responsibility. Developer can contact wildlife agencies. We recommend that their on-staff biologist contact wildlife agencies to discern whether compliance is necessary or what have you. Wildlife agencies, starting on January 1st, 2023, determine what compliance looks like. I don't have incidental take. I'm not a permittee to a habitat conservation plan, and I can't provide for incidental take. So consequently, that pathway, although I prepare SEQA documentation, a mitigation would be in terms of biologists is seek compliance with the Endangered Species Act, consult with the individual wildlife agencies. Appreciate your patience. I've been asked to simplify the complex. I'll do my very best. The decision really is summarized in three ways. It's a matter of certainty versus uncertainty. You can also look at it in terms of shared costs versus individual cost assessments. And then you can ask yourself the question, is it development-friendly or not? Let's take a look. Certainty versus uncertainty. And in terms of time, the time is unknown. Incidental take authorization is approvable in a five-day habitat conservation plan, grading hold process, permits are issued, cost is predictable. In this case, it would be $15,681 per single permittee, and that's a per acre fee. And it would facilitate implementation of a comprehensive species preservation and habitat conservation plan citywide as opposed to perhaps a case-by-case. Provides compliance with the Endangered Species Act and the California Endangered Species Act versus risk. Certainty is a relative assurance for the developer. There essentially is no risk as it relates to ESA compliance. You pay your fee, you go through the process, and you're in compliance with the Endangered Species Act. Uncertainty? It typically takes multiple years to negotiate and prepare an individual project HCP with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and an incidental take permit with CDFW. The cost? I asked for some clarity from CDFW, and CFW sent me a very comprehensive email. And right now, the application for an incidental take permit, which, by the way, has a one-year waiting list before they will begin to process it, is just shy of $30,000 for the application. It doesn't include any expenses associated with consultants or attorneys or project managers or mitigations or any of the time for negotiations. It can be a multi-year process or a one-off incidental take permit. And in terms of risk, each project negotiation is unique. There's no sense of what the cost could be or won't be. There is differing requirements, costs, and schedules. How about if we look at it?
Can you help advance a slide, please?
I'm thinking we need Energizer batteries. Cost considerations. Shared costs versus individual costs. When you pay a shared cost, you know what that cost will be. For 28 years, it's been $2,145 per acre and your grading hold process. Without that shared cost, then there are going to be some developers who find their projects to be essentially unfeasible and unable to move forward with them. We do have properties in the city that function as habitat. With those properties, they'll need to consult with wildlife agencies in advance of any construction. We may go through an entire SEQA process, have all of our entitlements in place, and we do that quicker than just about any city I know of, try and build in L.A., but then be stopped dead in our tracks because, as one of those mitigation measures we'll surely read, seek compliance with your wildlife agencies. So it's either we all shoulder the costs or individuals shoulder the cost. And lastly, development-friendly. That's a big question for us. We say we want to be development-friendly all the time, and we do. We want to be development-friendly. We want to do things quicker. We want to do things that cost less. We want to do things that facilitate the best type of development for the citizens of Bakersfield and for our development community. We have a 28-year sample set of having a habitat conservation plan. Over that period of time, the city's theme, its motto, has changed three times. That's how long we've had habitat mitigation in this city. It's doubled. It's doubled in size. In 1994, we were 204,000 people. Today, we're 420,000 people per my latest internet hit. That's a big question. What is development-friendly? That's a decision you have to make. I wanted to do a little bit more and say, well, what is everybody else paying that has a Habitat Conservation Plan or an NCCP, which is a natural community conservation planning tool? And in the end, the proposed fee in front of you is very consistent, perhaps a little lower than other surveyed Habitat Conservation Plans that are out there and active today and current in their fee schedules. I would note that I think the East Contra Costa specific plan went 11.1% just last year to $18,938. So just like F-150s, it doesn't go up per the Consumer Price Index, and we may look back 10 years from now and say, what a deal that would have been. That said, today, I've asked the council to provide staff direction as to what to do. These are three potential avenues that you might take. But you are my discretionary body, and I work for you, and I'll take the direction you provide to me. You can direct staff to complete this process and perform all the tasks necessary to formalize a new HCP. And your action tonight would essentially signal that this is what you wanted to do to have a new HCP, because once we go to federal register, we're essentially telling the federal government that we want to have a Habitat Conservation Plan. You could direct staff to perform all steps required to discontinue the HCP and ITP process, and I would do that per your direction. Or you could provide alternative direction to staff. I need to note that funding for this plan has been through grants, a series of four grants over these eight years, that have, along with matching funds through my staff's work, which has been weighty, been costing the city nothing to go through this process. But on March 31, the last of those grants closes. So any work beyond that period, we would need to look for new funding sources to complete that work. And with that said, thank you so much. I want to note that my consultant, Brad Norton with ICF, is here. And Craig Bailey with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife is graciously in attendance. I wanted to add too that the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service individual, Justin Sloan, wanted to be here but had a scheduling conflict. So you have some industry experts to help answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Boyle. Mr. Clegg, any other comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I think to the question, we recognize that the cost implications are a major challenge. We also recognize that the other factors of time and predictability are also important considerations. And I've talked with several council members in this last week that I like to bring forward recommendations that are slam dunks. And I'll admit to the council that this is a challenging topic because we are weighing different pros and cons. And ultimately, as Mr. Boyle noted, you know, this is a tough decision for council to weigh those policy considerations, and we're prepared to take direction from the council on where we carry the risk. And so at the end of the day, I think we can be responsive to the needs of our community and the outlook of moving forward and anticipate a lively conversation, a number of questions.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. Councilmember Weir.
Thanks, Mayor. Throughout this and even throughout the presentation, we talk about risk, and there would be no risk if we had a HCP. But the risk is, there won't be any development either. This is a gigantic leap from where we've been. And honestly, I don't see how we can go from $2,100 to $14,000 against numbers on a page that, I don't know where these numbers came from, and I don't know that they're even reasonable. I also don't understand why, all of a sudden, the city has to hire people to fill slots and do services. And I don't want to pay pensions for that. I don't want to, I don't want to do that. I don't want our people to have to do that. If the state wants to do that, the state can come down and they can do it. It's not a problem. Frankly, I don't see, for me personally, I don't see a benefit to this HCP. It is exorbitant, and it's far, far, far away from anything that's reasonable. So I know you've done a lot of work on this. I know you've put a lot of time into this, but there's got to be some, some give in what the state is trying to do to us. And if they're just trying to put us out of work, this is the first step. It's, you know, people and their livelihoods and their investments, we're telling them that basically, they may not be able to do it anymore. And I don't want to tell people that. We are business-friendly. And from what I see from this conservation plan, I don't see it as business-friendly at all. And I don't know how anybody could take a hit from $2,100 to $14,000 or $15,000, which will ultimately be. That changes everything. I mean, that's, you know, seven times. And it's all, you know, today. It's not measured, it's not blended in over time, it's today. And then what happens when this 30 years up, it's going to be $50,000. So I think this needs more work, myself. And I think we need to find some innovative ways to make this work without adding additional staff that we don't need, without expanding the mitigation fees to a point where they're just totally unreasonable, and without putting people out of business or devaluing their land, making it worthless. So I would like to say, we've got this in front of us right now. To me, it needs more work. It needs more work, and I would make a motion that staff work on this and continue working on it. And for tonight, we would just receive and file. And that's my motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Weir. Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I have a few comments. The first is, we heard from pretty much our entire building community. Heard from the BIA representative, we heard from the two biggest developers in town, Bold House and Castle &amp; Cook, we heard from one of our biggest apartment developers in town, who all said, we know the risk, we would rather, we'd rather have our old fee, we would continue with something that was reasonable, but we can't pass these costs on. We're in a housing crisis, we're in an affordability crisis. It's about going to translate into $4,000 to $5,000 of a price increase in every home in Baker, every new home. Those are the numbers. I was a builder for 33 years, 21 of them here. And the first year, we didn't have the Habitat Conservation Plan. And we had one place where we had some kit foxes, and we kind of dealt with it, and we moved them off, we bought some mitigation land. It didn't end our lives. It was a pain, but we did, and then we were in other areas developing all over California where we didn't have the programs. Most cities still don't have this program, by the way. And when they found this species, we'd have to buy, you know, mitigation land for that, we'd go through the surveys. Yeah, it was delays, it was a problem. But we had a fee that it had to be passed on, but at least the 20, at least we could bear it. Now, our affordability is, we used to have affordability, by the way. That was when we were selling homes at $99,000. Now, what's the median, 350 in Bakersfield, 360? And new homes down on Panama Lane, which were what we thought was bread and butter, we used to call it housing for our working-class citizens of Bakersfield, our new home buyers, which are 75% of all those new home buyers, are our children buying their first home, okay? It's only a small percent in Bakersfield that is the upper end. So my, now it'll be my grandkids, but you know, our children who want a home someday are being shut out by things exactly like this. We have a governor who says we have a housing crisis and yet continually adds to the cost, on purpose adds to the cost so our kids can't afford a home. And our working people can't ever own a home. All of this isn't necessary, but they keep doing it, and now they broke the backs. You know, Mr. Boyle should have turned around and made the presentation to the builders. They know everything he said. They're the audience, not us. We shouldn't be determining their cost structure. They know what they can pay for and survive. And they said, we hate taking this risk, we can't do it. Don't shove this down our throats because we can't build anymore if you do this. And they built all the homes in Bakersfield. So I don't know why, that is who we represent, constituents, it's not each other. We're making a decision for them against their will. Makes no sense at all to me. They are willing to bear the risk, they wish they didn't have to, but they want to be able to build something and keep their costs down, and they can't keep raising prices. So I have a couple ideas. I would rather, hey, we'll go without the plan, we lived without a plan before, and they can come back to us in a year and say, boy, this was a disaster. Will you put a plan in place? If they don't, then we know, never should have been paying a fee in the first place. But I would leave it to our constituents who are going to pay all this to tell us after they've experienced this for a year, you know, can they really, you know, can they afford to pay this big fee? Is their life a nightmare now? Let them tell us. They're the people we're trying to make a decision for. I feel uncomfortable making a decision for them about their fees and their pricing and costs when we don't have to do this. This is totally voluntary. So the only other thing I'd say, this is killing our affordability. I can see if the city wanted to do this, I have no idea, my councilmembers agree, if we build 1,000 homes a year and the cost is going to go up $3,000 or $4,000 a homes, let's just pay, let's, the city, we just paid ourselves. Let's pay the increase ourselves and keep our affordability. And, you know, we spend, how, $300 million to $600 million a year in this city. We pay for a lot of things. I'd be willing to keep the whole 1,000-home building community, new construction, and all the jobs going. I'd be willing to pay the increase out of our city coffers. If we really say we got to have this, we want housing and jobs and affordability, well, let's just pay the increase for them. Well, let's not do something they said they don't want. So I'm very much against just, once again, saying, every time it falls on the young people. We always screw the young people. Fees when I came were like $6,000 a unit for a house, they're like 40 now. None of us paid it, it's our children that pay it. I am so sick of shafting our kids with this stuff because we have ours. I just can't go along with this anymore. It's just wrong. So I'm totally against this.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. So as I understand it, we don't have a plan now. We're past it.
Correct.
So has anybody tried to deal with Fish and Wildlife yet?
We're not, yeah, not to our knowledge.
What, how is it determined that you need to go through the application process with Fish and Wildlife? If I just want to come get a grading permit, the city says, you need to get something from Fish and Wildlife? Or you just say, I'm okay, I didn't see any kit fox?
Essentially, yes. Currently, if we were to issue a grading permit, we would run it through our grading hold process, well, prior to January 1, run it through the grading hold process. A biological study would be included within the grading hold. It would be, those things were sent to CDFW, and then ultimately, the hold would be released, and we would issue the grading permit. Today, we don't have that process, so essentially, ground disturbance in the city would require consultation with the wildlife agencies. The city doesn't have the ability to provide for any incidental take. What I mean is, any adverse impact to an endangered species. So I think it's fair to say that in some cases, there would be no need for any mitigation to be done as part of a particular project.
How's that determined now, though? Whether or not the developer needs to go to Fish and Wildlife or he doesn't?
That's determined by the wildlife agencies. Again, staff does not provide direction as it relates to that. We don't have the authority to make a determination that a project's consistent with the Endangered Species Act or the California Endangered Species Act.
So they say, I want a grading permit. You say, have Fish and Wildlife sign off that you don't have a problem.
Yes.
And so they have to go to Fish and Wildlife. Can I have the gentleman from Fish and Wildlife come up? Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Craig Bailey, I am the supervisor of what's commonly referred to as the CC unit for the Central Region of CDFW and currently acting as the environmental program manager for the Central Region over all its regulatory programs.
Thank you. So we want to get a grading permit. We've got farmland. We've been farming it forever. We don't think there's any, we plowed it yesterday, there's no kit fox out there. How do we get an okay from you so we can get a grading permit?
So it depends, and I know that's probably not the most satisfying answer, but it starts with the SEQA process. So right now, what happens under the city generally for most listed species that developers would encounter, they just reference, we're paying HCP fees. And we essentially say, you're good, we're not going to do a critical analysis of what was included in the SEQA document, and we're happy, go ahead and go forward.
Right.
If there isn't an HCP in place or a plan for what we do, is we typically start with, you know, the SEQA process, we respond in early consultation, what our concerns are, and then when the SEQA document comes out, we list what studies we would like to see to determine if an ITP may be necessary or not.
We did SEQA 10 years ago. We did, we did, we had a big plan.
Right, not uncommon. Then we work with folks to determine what it looks like on the ground. And so that may be working with their biologist, it may be going out and just meeting with an individual developer in the field and taking a look at their property. Where time becomes an issue is, for example, I have one person that covers Kern County, Kings County, Flory County, and Slow County. And so, you know, taking time to meet with folks, you know, is, it can be a delay.
So a week, a month, a year?
It depends on workload and what's going on. And I have seen it happen in as short as a year, or excuse me, in as short as a week, and take up to a year for that kind of consultation.
Just to say, okay, you look good.
It depends on information. So typically, if you're, let's just say, you're in the middle of an irrigated ag field, you know, we've had a good biologist go out there, document there's no small mammal burrows, you know, submit pictures and stuff. Sometimes we can do a desk review and turn that around typically in less than, you know, a month. We have a dedicated SEQA unit, which is separate from my unit, that usually initiates contact through SEQA. So I'm speaking a little bit for their timelines, and this is after SEQA is done. So that's where we start. Now, if you start seeing, let's say, you had small mammal burrows on your farm or on ag land or within, you know, a root roll lot, what we might say is, okay, well, what's the next door? You know, is there something that could have come over nearby, or is that just common ground?
Riverbed.
Yeah, yeah. So we just start walking through those things and asking questions. And so that's what can be time-consuming. And so that's what can be time consuming, and it really just depends on the specific project. I know people bristle a little bit at this, but it really is project by project and site by site, and sometimes that takes, you know, time to get through all of that.
So does it matter if it's one acre or 100 acres? If I want a grade, one acre, I need to talk to you?
Potentially, depending on where it is. And I think one of the things about Bakersfield, which you all are aware of, is, you know, kit foxes distributed throughout the city. It can be in a one-acre rural lot next to an In-N-Out Burger or something.
Down, down.
And so, yeah, and that's, you know, right now, we don't worry about that as the department. We say, "You have a plan in place, you know, it's covered, you know, the city." I just want to be clear, I think the city's been a good partner, you know, in this. You know, as with all things, I've gone on for 28 years, there have been hiccups. But, you know, in general, because of that, even when there have been, you know, misunderstandings or maybe someone, you know, was out of compliance with the permit, I felt like we worked well together to get back. So in general, when these things have come up, we've said, "We're good, just go." We also regularly get calls from members of the public who say, "I see kit fox on the site, and I see someone grading it." And we generally just say, "Well, we'll check with the planning staff, and they'll acknowledge that, yeah, they paid their fees." And we say, "Yeah, well, they're following their permit." And, you know, whereas, so that's kind of, I don't know if I'm quite answering your question, because I know you're asking for our specific timelines, and it's hard, yeah, it's hard by a project.
Easy, and it's going to be very difficult.
Yeah. But I would say, for some projects, I think we could answer it very quickly. For others, it would be a long dialogue. And that's really hard to determine, particularly in Bakersfield, where, like I said, you know, we don't have a lot of other areas where you have a kit fox in the middle of the city.
Okay, thank you.
Also, I would just like to offer, if you had any other questions about the fees or the, you know, the staff position, et cetera, I'm happy to answer them. We really do want to be transparent.
I would follow up on the, it seems to me that the biggest cost has got to be the land cost. I mean, we talked about biologists and stuff, but that's, is it a conservation easement, or you have to actually buy the land-in fee?
Either is acceptable to the department. And so, and I just want to be clear, these fees were generated by the city's consultant and planning team. So I know there was, said before, it was CDFW's fees. Just wanted to be clear, we generally agree with the assumptions of them, so I don't want to, you know, throw my hands up and say, "Oh, we didn't, we don't agree with this." You know, some of the things in there are to provide certainty. So for example, if you get this permit, we want your development community to go quickly. And so, in talking with your staff, they were talking about timelines of how fast they want the development to go. And so when I have one person that covers four counties, we didn't want you to get caught up in that workload. And so that's why we said, "If you want that quick of a turnaround, we need a funded position." We can not turn it around that quickly and not fund a position, so that's optional. So those are things that, you know, I just want to be clear, that it's not us saying you have to fund a position. We're saying if you want certain schedule milestones hit, we currently don't have staff capacity to guarantee that.
Is that the biologist?
It would be the state-funded position. To be clear, our permit currently doesn't have the city biologist in that as a requirement. There was some talk about how it could be helpful to the city, but it's not currently in our current draft of the permit as a requirement, just for clarity.
Okay, great, thank you. Maybe I can talk to the consultant for a minute about the total fee. Mr. Norton, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, Brad Norton with ICF.
Thank you. So we're looking at, you know...
Let's just wait a minute until people are seated, please.
$15,000, $16,000 of that, how much is the land acquisition cost?
I think this table 8-1 is helpful to see. You can see the $1.2 million average annual cost per year goes to land acquisition, so...
So a little more than 25, 30%.
Right. And the other costs go to habitat management, that perpetual management costs, the urban kit fox program to better, you know, monitor and...
What's endowment?
Endowment is the money that is required to continue to pay those ongoing costs over time. So it's basically a piece of the funding that helps ensure that that funding is available, and it's basically a capital account that is only used to, the revenue of that capital account is used to pay for these other expenses on an annual basis.
Is that for after the 20 years?
Exactly. It does cover that perpetual maintenance and monitoring requirements associated with the plan. I would say that we also subcontracted with Economic and Planning Systems to help do, verify the funds associated with these costs. And Economic and Planning Systems is kind of a reputable economic firm. They have done quite a bit of economic analysis for different fees. You saw that table of the different fees for those different counties. I will note that, you know, several of those other counties are very agricultural and development-oriented as well, Sacramento County, Yolo County. So I just, we do feel that these fees are representative of what's needed for this plan with these current requirements.
Is the land acquisition, is that buy-in-in fee or conservation easements, the estimates? I mean, it seems like the conservation easement would be much cheaper than actually buying the property.
I forget what the exact split is in terms of what percentage of those land acquisition costs go to conservation easement versus acquisition. I think there's, it's probably a hybrid where there's some combination of both that are used to build your preserve system.
So these are estimates? Are the estimates, you know, after five years, 10 years, relooked at and recalculated, or just, it is what it is forever?
There, Chris, do you know what the plan says about that?
I believe the plan says, and I can't speak with certainty, I'd have to delve into it a little deeper, but I believe the plan says that you can adjust plans per the Implementation Trust Group, much like the current plan does.
Thank you. And what we've seen in other plans is that they do often do a periodic fee assessment, so they do want to account for inflation over time. They want to make sure that they're, you know, you don't, you want to make sure that the costs, that the plan is paying for itself, so that, you know, as future development proposals come in, that you're accounting for, you know, what the demands are in the plan in terms of, if land rates actually increase in price, like the conservation lands that you're targeting increase in price, you want to make sure that you are able to adjust the fee to cover those increased costs. Now, if land decreases, then, you know, values decrease, then of course, the plan fee could go down. But certainly, a lot of these contemporary plans do have this fee adjustment. And I would say that that's the one thing that's, I think, a little bit unrealistic to kind of look at this current fee structure with your current plan and say that, "Oh, we keep paying this low amount on an annual basis." I just, no current plan that is approved by the Fish and Wildlife Service or CDFW does what this current plan does and not account for inflation and not account for increasing costs associated with land acquisition. So it's kind of a false comparison to be able to say, "Oh, this was such a good deal, we're going to, you know, we're missing this deal." Well, this deal no longer exists, the plan has expired, and I think this really represents kind of the evolution of what these development-oriented HCPs and incidental take permits cost in this day and age. And so I recognize that it is also very expensive, and that you feel like it's very expensive, but I do say that this is really what's required to kind of get across the finish line and create a simplified process for applicants to be able to obtain incidental take permits. So if they have the risk of taking listed species, then they need incidental take permit coverage. And on a developer-by-developer basis, they will make those evaluations, and some developers will win and some will lose in terms of, you know, how long it takes and how much it costs and how much they can acquire mitigation for, right? If they have a large, you know, mitigation pool that they can already draw from, then maybe it's, you know, it'd be better to go alone. So I think Chris has laid out some of those thoughts.
What's the, maybe you're not the right person to ask, but up and down the valley, most cities have something, don't have something?
It's largely driven by the number of listed species in a local jurisdiction, right? And so we are seeing that towns with a number of listed species in close proximity to development and in close proximity to their growth areas need to cover them and are using this as a tool to help their development community identify and strategize and grow into, you know, areas that they've slated for development. Whereas without the permits, then they, each developer has to kind of go it on their own.
Okay, thank you. I guess, you know, I thought maybe we could have staff continue to look at, but as I look at that, the estimates, you know, some, there's not much things that, seems like there's a lot of money in the administration and habitat management, but according to Fish and Wildlife, those are kind of our choices on some of that, the biologists, you know, on timing. And I guess I'd like staff to go back and say, "Okay, you know, how could we streamline this? And maybe it's not, you know, going absolutely as fast as, but we would have certainty, and what would that cost be?" I think I'm hearing that, you know, it going as fast as we want, then, you know, the cost goes up. And, you know, maybe there's something in between that we can look at. I mean, as far as the development community is concerned, we don't have a plan right now. You know, go for it, you're on your own. And if in the meantime, we can come up with something that is more reasonable, that they could swallow, I mean, my preference is, you know, the devil I know is better than the one I don't, but I'm hearing something different from the community. They're willing to roll the dice with the state. Good luck. But that's my feeling, if staff could maybe streamline it down and give us, you know, the in-between option, that would be something good to look at.
That's his motion.
Well, I'm willing to listen, but, yeah, I'll make that motion.
He made it.
Okay. Well, I thought you made the motion to table it and forget about it.
No, 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 no. I said to go, staff to go back and work on it, receive and file tonight, and then they would come back to us. And staff, yeah, staff continue to work on it, it needs more work. Receive and file.
Okay, great.
And if I made two points, we will, you know, staff will acknowledge the feedback received on the fees and include that in our work-on-it motion. I would note that it sounds like, you know, there are some options to, you know, perhaps tweak timeframes, and so there's maybe a little bit of savings there. But I do want to acknowledge that, you know, many of the core components of these planned costs, even though we estimated the costs, these are the programs that, you know, we perceive that the state is expecting to be included in an adoptable plan from their perspective. And so we can't just necessarily strike an entire program out of here to do those cost savings. We'd have to work with CDFW to determine, you know, the core programs that have to be in place. But we'll look at how we can adjust some of the costs down based on the timeframes, as you pointed out, and maybe there's some other areas where we can shave a little bit. And ultimately, that compounds over time. So that total $122 million amount, if we save a little bit on the annual cost, that will be reflected over the full timeframe of the conservation plan. And so maybe we can get some savings there that do add up to something notable and tangible.
Thank you. Let me, one more for the Fish and Wildlife. So we kind of talked about the best-case scenarios, you know, the one week, one month, and you don't have a problem. So what happens if you do see a burrow, or you do, then that's the one-year application?
Yeah, so let me clarify. Thank you for asking that question and giving me an opportunity to clarify. So when determining whether take coverage is necessary, that can be in as little as a week, or when I was saying take up to a year, because that might mean that it's not clear. I mean, we could also determine possibly within a week, you need, a project needs take authorization. But when I was saying the years, you know, there might be something that's not clear one way or the other, so a little more investigation's needed. Or, you know, sometimes we'll have a project proponent say, "Oh, well, if you're worried about this feature, if we alter our project this way, what do you think about that?" So that's why when I was saying it can take up to a year to determine whether take authorization is necessary, is sometimes it's a dynamic dialogue on what they're doing with the project. Sometime it's just a timing issue to, like, avoid a breeding season. And I'm talking globally for permits. But if we, if we, if take authorization is needed, you pay the fee, which for most development projects is around $29,000, around $30,000, and it goes up every calendar year, that's for the application.
And that doesn't matter whether it's one acre, 100?
Correct. Well, it's based on total project costs, and most development projects are in the category, that's the price range. It's conceptually possible there would be something outside of that, but yes. And so it's based on project cost, not on acreage. And then we have 30 days to deem the application complete or incomplete. If we're not given all the information we need in the ITP application, then it's returned and for more information, and the clock starts again. Then once that's done, it goes into our queue. And right now, I would say, expect a year, so right now, we have a backlog because we had a lot of vacancies in my, in my unit. Those are now filled, thankfully, so I expect the timeline I'm going to give you is going to speed up. But right now, I would say with our backlog, it's probably a year to two years to get an incidental take permit from us on our current backlog. I anticipate, after working through our backlog over the next couple of years, we can get an ITP out in less than a year. But that's, you know, fingers crossed right now.
And what does a take permit look like when you get one?
So it's pretty similar to what the city received from us for statewide. It's going to have conditions of approval, you know, things like having a designated biologist on your project site, providing what we call habitat management lands, what's typically referred to as mitigation land. That includes typically a permanent conservation easement, perpetual endowment to fund management of whatever...
So you're going to have to go out and do all that yourself?
Yourself, independently. And the reason I, the reason the department likes the idea of big plans like Bakersfield is there's an economy of scale, and, you know, I'm not an economist, but from what we've heard from folks is, you know, if you have to pay for a biologist to go out and just to your site, you know, that's a certain sort of standard mobilization cost that doesn't get spread out versus, you know, when you're going in with a larger group of people, you can spread those costs out amongst the group, and it lowers it down on a per-acre basis. And so that's why we frequently see, you know, mitigation costs for a permit, for individual permits, you know, be in the high six figures, or sometimes for really large projects, you know, in the millions. And so, yeah, it's typically lower, you know, under this plan on a project-by-project basis. The other timing concern that sometimes happens is, the initial screening is clear for endangered species, and a project starts, and then an endangered species moves in.
Right, we've been building freeways and...
Yeah, and then, and then the project has to stop and wait and get a permit and start fresh. And so that's the other aspect of certainty, that, you know, it's nice having a permit in place, which is why I think, you know, Mr. Norton, when you mentioned, you know, having, if you're concerned about a high risk, sometimes getting a take permit for that certainty so you don't have to stop is valuable.
Thank you. Okay, that's all I got, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Gray.
Well, good evening. I appreciate everybody coming tonight because this is a very important subject that we're talking about. We were small developers ourselves at one time, my husband and I, so we have some understanding of this. And I used to have a kit fox that lived right on my, by my front door at night. So they're quite friendly, and they're not that scared of people, I found out. But anyway, that aside, I would want to say that, first of all, I really agree with my colleague, Councilmember Freeman. It is important for us as city council members to not push what our will is on our constituents, but for us to hear from our constituents and hear what their pain is and what their needs are. And it's very, I typed up my response yesterday when I started reading about this and then did my own homework, and made the decision myself that it's very important... and then did my own homework and made the decision myself that it's very important that we do what our local developers are asking for. I'm not as concerned about those that just want to come in and start grabbing up land, but I am very concerned about our local developers, including Castle &amp; Cook, who has given so much value to our city over the last 30 years. I'm not for sure how long, but for a long time. And those are the developers that we need to be listening to and protecting. When I look at these estimated costs, I laugh at this $541,000, up to $16 million on an urban kit fox program, when I used to have one that lived right at my front door. I mean, for Pete's sakes, here we go again, state of California, running business out faster than we can bring business in because of these ridiculous regulations and fees that are driving our local businesses out. If we want to be a business-friendly city, then I think we need to be listening to our developers and let them take the risk. Because that's what it's all about when you're in business. As business owners and developers, we made a decision that there's risk involved to be in business. So let us take the risk instead of our government, again, shoving something down to our throat, a bunch of bureaucrats in Sacramento telling us what is good for us. That's not the way we should be doing business in Bakersfield. If our local developers came to us tonight and said, we are all for this $15,000, $16,000 per acre, we want you to move forward with it, I would be saying, okay, let's support you, let's do that. But to be having to hire in the city more staff, kit fox biologists for Pete's sakes, that we're gonna have to pay pensions on and so forth, like my colleague pointed out, I just think it's ridiculous. And I was just at a conference where we were talking about housing last month in Texas. And last year, and this morning, we were at the Brundage Lane Navigation Center, celebrating their new expansion. And over and over again, it was, we talked about affordable housing. How can we have affordable housing? Well, in this country, last year, we had a drop in new homes nationwide, 400,000 homes that were not built nationwide. There was a drop in existing home sales in one year of 33%. And there was 33% less buyers due to rising interest rates. So as, as Councilmember Freeman said, again, we are dumping this burden on our children and on the working class and on a four-acre piece of property with four homes at $16,000, he did his math right, that's $4,000 per house. That extra $4,000 that we're tacking on could be the difference between that working family being able to buy that house or not. So in the state of California, are we wanting affordable housing or are we not wanting affordable housing? Because if we continue down this road, we won't have any developers left in California. They were all, they'll all head to Texas, because that's what's happening today. So I would very much be against moving forward with this HCP, because I think we need to allow our constituents in our local community make the decision of what's best for them and not us make it for them. So with that, I think that, again, if we can curtail our cost and keep things as low as possible, we have the greatest opportunity in Kern County than any other county in the state, because north of us and south of us, it's two to three times to buy a home as what it is in Kern County. So let's keep everything as reasonable as possible so that we can continue growth, because we have an opportunity for growth that no one else in the state has. And I have, we had a customer come in just last month into our business, and they told us that they had bought a house in Bakersfield with a pool, a landscaped yard, for less money per month than what they were paying for a one-bedroom apartment up north. That is the reality, and that is the, the opportunity that we have here in Kern County if we will not succumb to the state pressure of all these ridiculous costs that we're seeing in front of us on the screen. So let's not put up roadblocks for progression. Let's open the gates to developers and saying, hey, we're business-friendly, if you're willing to take the risk, we want to have you right here in Kern County.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, had some questions related to costs and how these implementation costs were calculated. Given the, the time, I will just ask staff offline to provide some reports. But I just want to point out in the Bakersfield Habitat Conservation Draft Plan 8.3.1.1, it states that land acquisition costs excluding transaction costs and habitat documentation are estimated at approximately $34 million. This estimate relies on the assumption that 100% of newly acquired lands would be acquired in fee title as opposed to conservation easement at an average cost of $3,900 per acre. This key assumption of average per-acre land cost is based on an extensive history of land acquisition, a parcel, similar location and condition that would be acquired by the HCP. And it goes on listing some other assumptions. So I want to kind of push us to drill down on some of those assumptions and make those clear to the council of what are, what are those assumptions in these costs, behind these costs, so we can, we can have a better understanding of what staff analysis really is about. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Freeman.
I'm gonna be totally supportive of Councilman Smith's motion. I want to get one idea out of the way, sitting here saying, you know, like a Rubik's Cube, how can we solve this problem? Or come close. And, you know, the box a little bit here. Rather than pay $4 million a year forever, I'll bet we could do this for a few hundred thousand a year forever. Here's how. I would, I would like to see us put $1 million in our budget, like we did for incentives for people to put new facades on their buildings downtown, all that stuff I've been totally in favor of. I'd like to, you know, start with a pot of $1 million, and I think we'd look at the end of the year that we only spent about 100. And that would be available to pay for all the costs of one of the poor developers who got caught with a kit fox on his property. Because I've been there and I've had to mitigate all over the state, go through the whole process, I've lived it for years. You can get through it, and yeah, you're going to have a delay, but, you know, you, these guys have said, we'll live with it, okay? But if we, I think, they, then we, I figured out how to write that when you apply, but I gotta, I have to pay for a biologist, I have to have a survey, I'm not gonna pay for the delay, you know? I gotta pay for mitigation land at 30 of the acre to replace this weed or something. Okay, I would like the city to put a fund together to assist the developer that got caught in this, which will be 1 in 100, by the way, that's all it'll be, and help them out, and then we'll look at the end of each year and say, well, how much of that did we spend? I would guarantee you, we'll never spend the million, and we might, the next year say, we'll make it 500. What is a reasonable number? But then it gets us out of this wasting $4 million a year and increased pricing in our homes and everything else. So after Councilman Smith's motion, I'm just giving you a little warning, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion of my own and see who I can get to go along with it.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. I think Councilmember Freeman hit it right on the head there at the end. I think what's important is calculating that risk, and I think the key component is understanding how often a developer is going to need that incidental take permit, right? If, if it's very low, if it's 1 in 100, then I can see why the development community wants to assume that risk and take that responsibility on. Now, if it's much higher, if it's a 50/50 chance, then maybe working through it, HCP as a city, still provides that opportunity to develop at a cheaper rate. So I think, I'm supportive of Councilmember Weir's motion tonight to do some additional research, but I have a couple of questions that I would like for us to have answered, should this come back to this body. One, what is that rate of incidental take for private development? And then two, I think we've heard from both sides of the development community that, you know, taking on an HCP plan will either, you know, stimmy or promote actually, and reduce barriers to development. I would like for us to do some in-depth analysis, potentially a case study of a city that has not produced an HCP plan, and take a look at, you know, has this spurred growth, has it decreased growth, so that we can get to the bottom of that question. I also want us to take a look at affordable housing. How is this going to impact not just the private development community, but also our nonprofits who are in the same work to provide meaningful housing opportunities for low and very low-income families? And then lastly, one of the things that I found in doing my own research on this topic is that there may or may not be some additional risk related to litigation on an individual project with and without an HCP plan, and I would like for us to also take a look at that. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. I don't see any other requests to speak. You have a motion? Please catch your votes. Councilmember Smith's motion.
I'm, I'm sorry, I, Councilmember Weir made the motion. And I agree completely with what he made, I just clarified.
So, so here's the motion. It is to send it back to staff so that they can continue to work and tonight to receive and file. You have a motion? Please catch your votes. Thank you. And now, next item, please. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Freeman wishes.
Another motion. I'd like to make a motion that the city set aside a $1 million pot of money annually, you could kind of prorate back to this year if you want to do it on a fiscal year, but annually, to help defray the costs of any developer, including nonprofits, who may have endangered species on their properties that they have to mitigate and go through these processes. So that's my motion.
It looks like city manager wishes to speak.
Was there another council speaker ahead of me? Can I go?
Council, Councilmember Smith. Did you just buzz in?
I...
You did.
Yes, thank you. Could I have the city attorney talk about that a little bit? It seems like we should have a staff report or some, before we move forward with something like that.
Right, thank you, Councilmember Smith. I think the city manager, Clegg, was gonna mention that. Councilmember Freeman, due to the Brown Act, that, that really is not within the purview of the agenda item that was on the agenda tonight, but if you want to refer that item to a committee, perhaps the city manager, Clegg, could, could recommend what committee that could go to, and, and that could be, that could be discussed at that time.
I'm willing to do that. The committees have agendas of about 12 things right now. Is there any way staff could think it through and just come back to council with a, with a wording for unacceptable program like this? It's not that I'm trying to cut out input, we can have people talk when it comes back, but I know these, our committees are so stacked, I don't want to say, well, we'll come back in nine months and talk about it.
Yeah, Councilmember Freeman and Mayor and council, I think there's a couple of different opportunities that are in front of us pretty soon. We do have our council goals workshop that's coming up within this next month. We also have our budget process that's gonna play out very soon. We also have our mid-year process, which is actually on our agenda later tonight. But I would also respectfully suggest that there could be, you know, based on the good feedback from council tonight, as we go and look at that $4 million a year total cost, are there ways to potentially reduce that total $4 million? You made a comment as well, Councilmember Freeman, that made the light bulb go off in my head about, are there elements of that $4 million that we might just bear as city costs and elements that we ask the developers to bear under the land acquisition portion, which is probably a more reasonable amount, but those other administrative costs are what's ballooning the amount for the total program? So I would respectfully request an opportunity for us to go and crunch those numbers, look hard at it. We've heard your recommendation about, you know, setting aside money for, you know, ITP costs for developers. We'll come back to council with some recommendations about just how to best try and manage those overall costs.
Okay, how soon? Because we're now, they're all operating without a plan right now. So tomorrow, they could discover a species on the property. I don't want to bury this in a committee, or we'll talk about it in budget process, we'll bring it around in six months from now. That just, that's not acceptable. If, if, I've talked with Director Boyle endlessly, we aren't gonna get this fee down much, okay? The other side hasn't really worked with us. It's been their way or the highway, they haven't budged an inch for two years of negotiations. So I'd love a miracle to happen, but, you know, doubling the fee would have been unacceptable. A sevenfold increase is just so outrageous, you don't even, you can't even comprehend it. So I don't see how you're gonna come back with a new light bulb that, he's worked pretty hard on this, been thinking it through with everybody in the next 30 or 60 days. So I'm not sure how to proceed. I just, I wish, it wouldn't be that hard to do this and to get a fund set up, and, you know, if subsequent to that, you come up with a brilliant idea to keep the fee going, to go up, you know, some reasonable number, then, fine, we can cancel the fund, but...
For one, one point of clarification, Councilmember Freeman, are you assuming we appropriate dollars in advance of July 1st for this fund or in the new budget cycle?
I was saying, thinking we would set it up immediately, you might prorate it back if it's a million bucks, we only have four months left or something, that we have some money available if tomorrow one of these people gets caught and needs the help. So that's all. Or if you said we can get this all done in 60 days, I could accept it, but this sort of indefinite, it'll kind of, we'll, I know, we'll end up talking about it in six months and nothing will ever happen. That's, that's what I don't want to see happen.
Councilmember Freeman, if I may, perhaps we can have this conversation at the mid-year item at the 5:15 meeting, where we'll be allocating dollars at the mid-year budget, and perhaps this could be a, an light item that we might want to add.
Mid-year review?
That's correct, at the 5:15 meeting.
Okay, well, I, I'd like some assurance we'll bring it up at the mid-year review.
Okay. Councilmembers, is there anything further, Mr. Clegg?
Thank you, no, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for your input. City clerk, next item, please.
Adjournment.
We're adjourned at 5:28. Thank you all, we'll be back in, at 5:40, about 10 minutes. Sorry to keep you all waiting, we were addressing a very important issue, and for those of you who have items for public comment, please give them to the city clerk, we'll be back at 5:40. Thank you.